Okay, we're gonna continue the meeting from Sunday. And this is Friday the 13th. This is the 13th show.
It's a good day. I was born on Friday the 13th.
Well, congratulations and birthday. Today your birthday?
No, I was born on Friday the 13th.
She was born on eighth Friday the 13th.
Nah, it is Friday the 13th. So, Mr. Garabia, do you have any suggestions? Do you have any recommendations? Do you have anything to say about your bills or ...?
Okay, the total of the bills is two thousand, I mean, two hundred eighty-four thousand, yeah, okay, I got it, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents. I'll repeat that. Two hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And that's the total of all of the accounts that are generated, the one hundred and forty-four accounts plus some handwritten checks for community events, downtown tip, the industrial tip, and the I-57 interchange, which those totals came up to fifty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and two cents. But the total of all of those is the two hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents, and I'd like to make a motion to approve of that.
Okay.
Mr. Garabia? Yes. Mr. Schley?
Yes.
Mr. Menchisman?
Yes.
And along the line with the bills, I would like to address something that had to occur here in the office. I felt the need for the City of Benton does have a credit card that is used, and the credit card, I mean, there's times that we need to use the credit card to order things or whatever, and it's not to be used carte blanche for whatever anybody wants. Anybody who has, if they need to use the credit card, whether it be department heads or in the inner office here, zoning, or the mayor, is always to get authorization to do so, to pick up the card. We have a city Benton credit card policy that was established a couple of years ago, and it was established because it was determined, it was found out when we were having an audit that we did not have one, and so to be in compliance, we, a policy was developed. That policy is given to heads of the departments to sign, so there is maybe one or two who have not signed it, so I'd ask the commissioners, check with your department, anybody, I don't know, who all may have the authority or, you know, need, the need to use the credit card, but if they have the need, they need to have this signed so that they will know the stipulation. And there's thirteen stipulations on here.
Is there a current list of who already has authorization that we could look at, that we would know?
I think we would, just by going through the files, we'd be able to determine who has and who does not have that.
The ones that have signed, it's in their HR file, and the way, and I mean, if Kathy wants to change it, whatever, finance wants to do, the way Dennis set it up is when people would come in, and I think this is why we have it in some files and not others, when you would come in to get the credit card, you would sign off that you've got the credit card policy and you understood the rules, and then I'd give them to Melissa, 'cause she's over HR, and she would put them in their files.
Dennis put this in when he was here.
Yes.
But I got one question.
Yes.
I'm for that, but what happens? What happens, like, when you guys are going to Chicago, what happens if a department needs that week while you were gone, or that, or that three days, or however long you was gone, what do you do then? How do we, how do we do that?
Per, I mean, there still would have to be someone come in, pick up a card. Perhaps there could be a duplicate card, so that if there's one that Brooke is taking with her on a business trip, or another person might have a neat page, then we would have a duplicate card.
I think that would be the right thing to do, because I don't know about, I can't talk about his department or the water department, but a lot of things happen with public safety, and I think this is good. I think they need to sign it out, you know. But I don't know if my guys should sign that or not, but I think we need another card here.
Okay.
Let Brooke take care of the same one.
And we can do that. So, essentially, what has happened, the cards, the existing cards no longer exist. A new card is being sent to the, to the City of Benton, and that means that any, anything that is set up with a credit card for, you know, that's on file, all of those will have to be changed to the new card, but all of those are going to have to be registered with the city. We have accounts out there that a credit card is assigned to, and the city has no idea, and, you know, that they can be used. So, they can be used without authorization, they're actually being used without authorization because they're not listed and approved by the finance commissioner, the finance department.
So, is this a way to kind of wipe the slate clean and start over?
Wipe it clean and start over.
So, rather than try to piecemeal, who do we keep and what do we get rid of?
That's right. Because, you know, I mean, the buck stops here. If there's something, and if there's something that goes awry, if there's a charge made that we can't account for or whatever, and we're getting charged for it, you know, we've got to do something to, to show accountability and responsibility.
Have you had that problem?
I'll tell you the problem that we have is Brooke trying to do the bills, and bills coming in, and she has no idea on the credit card which department charged it, what it's for, or, because when something is charged on that credit card, it's to have prior approval. If the bills are supposed to, the receipts are supposed to come back into the office, the item that was purchased is supposed to be noted as to the need, what it was, and where it's supposed to be coded.
I agree with you.
Because she spends hours trying to figure out, where did this come from? Who says it? Who do I call? Or call a department head and say, "I need these bills. I don't know where, which line item to take it out of," and that makes her job really hard. And I know that shutting down the credit card had created an inconvenience, but she's inconvenienced all the time with trying to do what should be a department head's work.
It won't be an inconvenience with a double card. If she takes off with it, they've got to come in, they've got to sign for it, and what they're using it for.
Most of the time, that does happen. We've had a little bit in the last couple months, that a bill comes in, and I have no clue whose bill it is, where it's from, what department.
I'd say it's probably from the fire department.
I mean, I had a couple, but they're not the only ones that I've had, they're not the only ones that I've had issues with, but I have had a couple come from there, and we're just trying to make it as clean as we can.
Well, I don't blame you, I don't blame you, Ben. I think we need to do that, but I also believe we need a backup card.
Yeah, and we can do that. We're gonna address that, but we don't want the same situation. When a card leaves here, it is not to be duplicated.
No.
It's not to, no one's to take a picture of it, no one's to save that card in any fashion or form.
If they got one with them, they shouldn't duplicate it.
That's right.
They got, they just got the same card.
And this isn't, this is not in any way casting any concerns about someone being dishonest or using it in a wrongful way. It's only about accountability.
Melvin was chief when this took place, Kyle was, so I don't know if Mike has ever signed off on this or not.
I don't know if Mike has. I know Kyle had. Eric Davis was real good about when he comes in, sign in the paper. In my office, there is a clipboard, and it's got a sign-out sheet on it, and underneath that clipboard is a box. You're supposed to, according to the policy that was written, within forty-eight hours have the receipt bag, that box is for receipts, and then when the credit card bill comes in, we pull the box, we pull the receipt, so we can check everything off at that time.
And what I'd like to do is go over this policy, because I see that there's additions that need to be made to, and that new sign-on forms go out, and just then that way we know that everybody has signed off on it, that everybody, you know, even those who have signed off on it in the past may not even remember or realize what they signed off on, and I would like for each commissioner to go over it with them, so that they understand. This isn't in any way casting any accusations on anybody or suspicions on anybody, it's just we need to function like any corporation would function.
What are some examples of what the credit card is used for?
Well, when we're booking rooms, or if they're ordering, ordering some supplies from a company and they make.
And you can't be billed for it, or you have to?
Yeah, when we go to church, I can pull the MasterCard bill and show you, the street department actually had one at the time. And there are certain companies, Shane and I had this discussion, there are just certain companies that we need a part, or we need a book or something, and we can't find it anywhere else, and they don't allow you maybe to set up an account with them, or you need it right now because it's an emergency part, and so that's how you purchase it with the credit card.
So, did Skinner already have the card information, or did he ask for the card and do it?
I'm not positive. I believe that he asked for it, but I'm not positive off the top of my head right now. We can look at it and see.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I wouldn't let anyone else inside the Skinner have access to that. The one thing that I would ask for, if we have two, if we have two cards, is that, having two cards is fine, I wouldn't broadcast that we have two cards. I would make one, like, the conference card, or the card that secretly hides and lives and is being used, rather than having to track, like, okay, well, the one card's out. Oh, we've got a second card. No, we only have one card. The second card's only when the first primary card is gone. It's, that we're not tracking two credit cards coming and going, we're still distracting the one. The second card is merely for the backup purpose of when the first card is.
Is gone.
Is out of town.
Right.
If you come to the card and it's been out for twenty-four hours, you're gonna have to wait a day until it comes back, then you can have that card. You just don't grab the second card.
And the second card be designated for out of town, because that would be the one that would be.
Right. And that's what I figured, and primarily, it's usually Brooke that has it, but if it just lived and secretly with her, then it just goes, but then we still, that keeps the other card in town and always available.
Same number card.
Same number card.
Same number.
But as far as, but as far as the rest of our group's concerned, there's still just one card.
It'll be like user one, user two.
Just the department heads get it, that's all. Just the department heads.
Yeah. That's the odd.
Steve, I've already landed.
Chiefs, or whoever's over Craig, you know, or Skinner.
The department head, okay, the commissioners are held responsible for it, then the department head, if the department head wants to send one of his men with his card to go purchase something, I see no reason that that can't happen, as long as he's, you know, operating under the.
He's gonna have to say to the department head that he's being held accountable if he's been with the car.
That's right.
Having the same thing, you're having the same thing if somebody borrowed, like he said, Skinner would be the only one to borrow.
Wow. That's a good point, because if we, if anybody can use it, everybody should have to sign it.
Right. And I understand the inconvenience, but Skinner's working on the job site, they need something, let's say, from Rural King, and he's in the backhoe, I mean, he has to stop the backhoe, get out, go for himself, or can he send Dale? And send Dale to go get it, that way Skinner can keep working.
You'd have to, you'd have to open that up.
Well, it's probably every one of them is on there.
I mean, I'm just using an example of something that you'd have to use a card for.
And truthfully, what the card was set up for was for things like, this is an easy one, so I'm gonna use Shane. Shane did a book for the guys to get some of their training. Could not get that book, except online, because unfortunately, that's the whole business right now.
The majority of purchases will not be local purchases, they will be out of the area.
They will be out of the area. It is very rare that.
You'll have to handle the card on.
For purchase.
You've got to.
Because the local places, other than Walmart, we have accounts set up. We have a Dollar General account, we have an H Hardware account, we have a Stabilite account, we have a Rural King account, so places, yes, places like that, you're not gonna need to swipe a card.
So, really, there's no reason for why anyone other than department head and commissioners have it then? There's no reason if anyone besides the head is.
I'm not gonna be, I'll use my own.
Absolutely.
I'm real kind of.
I mean, I've got some Christmas shopping to do, so let's get this.
I don't wanna be responsible for it.
I wouldn't either, no.
But I don't, I don't think a commissioner, what would he really need unless he went out of town on business or something, like you guys did?
I don't think a commissioner has ever used it yet. When we went to, and I'm not, I mean, if the commissioner thinks that he needs to use it, I obviously think that you guys are all trustworthy, but when we went to IML, we took the card with us. Rachel was upset saying an extra day. We were able to book it. We would've had to have her book it and reimburse. That is always also another option. If someone needs something and for some reason a card was not available, we will reimburse. We write reimbursement checks to people as well.
Sure. We got accounts set up at Rural King, don't we?
Yeah, I just use that as an example, but I would think a place you might need something on the spot.
Yeah. No, I think, I, yeah, I do too.
As long as, as long as the second card becomes the hidden unused.
Well, the only time.
Out of town only.
Only time it would be used is if they're the mayor or.
Somebody goes out of town.
They're out of town. They wouldn't have to have it if they're not, if you all are in town.
Right.
Yeah, that way, there's just one card and always stipulation and a reservation.
Yeah, the only time it would go into effect is if the other one's out of town.
I agree with that, yeah.
I think there's something I've seen here which is good. And Donnie came in mid-term, his first term, you guys are newbies, and you've inherited things that, that need to be changed probably. You've inherited a budget, and you didn't have anything to do with the budget. And that's probably not fair to you, 'cause you have to work with a budget that could be outdated, or could be non-directional to where we want to go. So, we are gonna start rewriting our codes, the printer codes next month.
Next month?
Whenever you guys are writing.
Okay, so we have to, we gotta go over this going.
Yes, you should. I mean, you, you know, the commissioners, I should go over the fine-toothed comb, you know, and we'll look at what you're, what you're reading, and, but they just need to be updated.
How do we, how do we do that? What, can just do two, two people, two commissioners at a time? We can't work together?
Well, what, what I talked with David about was, there are some that are fairly department-specific, like, there's some that relate to streets of public improvement, there's some that relate to public safety, there's some, so there's categorical ones, so if the category ones for me, should come to me. Or if there's ones for zoning, I thought they should really go to David, and I told David, I said, "Won't you hand that to the zoning board? And let them, let their eyes look at it."
Sure.
And let them make recommendations, something we'd obviously take them, but they can make recommendations about zoning, which takes them off his plate, either them doing it or you can pass it back. Then any of the nonspecific ones, they could be divvied up among all the commissioners, that way, we're not all having to do it.
Yeah, we could, we could, everybody, but I think Perkins, we're, we're pretty flexible.
Right. We'll have to look at them and highlight anything that we're questionable about, or that we think we would like to see changed, and then the legal, I have to see all of it to see if we're just way off target with something.
And I think that's your flow through, is that we all make recommendations.
Right.
Pass it up to him, and then he can compile it, and then revisit them as a whole.
That's a good idea, on what he said, his department, my department, your department, and David's department, let David do his.
And there's, and there's some that are far, because, you know, some that we talked about. We vote backflow preventers.
Right.
That's, you know, that's, so there's ordinance there, so there are some waters who are related ordinance as well.
Oh, yeah.
But those would go to Craig, and Craig could evaluate those and say, "Ian, here's the," you know, and I would do that with Skinner, just Skinner, here's something, what would you change to make our jobs better and the city bill easier? And get his input, so we'd each have department people that could help us visit us.
We've got so many out there that we do enforce a ton, a ton. We might enforce it one time, forget about it, you know.
And then, yeah, the question then becomes, are they wanted to keep, to try and enforce, or do you rewrite them to where they may attempt, so they can be enforced?
If we're not enforcing, why have?
A great example is, we just approved the Presbyterian Church to become a home business, but if you read the ordinance, the ordinance says you can only sell products made within the home. Well, she's got a little boutique in there, she's not making those things, she's selling them. The ordinance says any home business has, if you're selling, you're retailing, so if you go down the street and you go to Teresa Bowlin, and she cuts hair, well, she sells hair products. She's not making hairspray there, but she's selling it. So, that's, the ordinance needs to be updated. Right now, they're all violations.
Yeah.
Every home business is.
And they're not enforcing.
And we're not enforcing. But it's also ordinance that doesn't make sense anymore, because you're not making it at home. So, that's one example of a lot that we just, maybe we'll tweak, just to make sure that it's in compliance, rather than deeming the business owner, the homeowner, it's updated where it makes sense.
And there needs advancement of social media and internet to, and make some changes to that program being better.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, I think we're in the right direction, you know. The mayor goes out of his way not to get involved in other people, other businesses, don't do that. I don't think I should. I don't know, you're, you're pretty good at that, you know. I go visit people, but as far as, hey, you better to get this done, you know, that's, that's the old school. We had a little situations a couple weeks ago that Lee took care of, and, you know, I went through him, and I could've easily walked across the street and said something, but, you know, if that's not the mayor's job. The mayor's job is to go to the commissioner, it's a commissioner-run government we have here, and I think it's working, I like it. You guys are doing a good job, but we just need to be more alert to the codes and really start doing some updating, and be sure, you know what we're enforcing, you know. But Kathy does have a problem with budget, I'm Kathy. I look at that to cross-eyed, let it just change.
So, I would reiterate that, you know, as commissioners, stay on top of your department heads, to make sure that they, you know, if they go to Rural King or anywhere, and there's purchases made, when those receipts, that the receipts need to come in, they need to be.
What, what happens?
They need to be coded, so, because that's not her job to do their job.
Right. What happens with fire departments? And I'm not taking up for them, but I think they show me, they take a truck to get it worked on. We had this trouble when Dennis was here. They would take a truck to get it worked on, and they'd bring that truck back, that truck's unfixed. Well, they made, they made it for November the 12th, 19, when the truck went in. We don't, we take it back, they don't send the bill out till they get the truck back. I think it's come back three or four times. One of them's a fast truck. We don't get that, the bill is dated for the 12th, but we might not get it till February, till they get the truck done.
Whenever you leave a department, can you not leave with something? I mean, whenever you leave, whenever the.
They can't give you nothing, 'cause they don't know what it's gonna cost to fix it, and even when you bring it back, what they fixed on it didn't work, so they gotta, they gotta go back and put something else into it to get it.
Okay, but I don't think I've ever had my vehicle worked on, that I, when I pulled out, that they didn't give me some kind of a, a bill, or invoice, or something that showed what, what they did to that point, and what it caused, that could be brought to Brooke if she can deal with it.
If it's not fixed.
What we asked them to do though, which still isn't happening in any department, is if that's to happen, handwrite a note on there, so when the auditors pull it, and they say, "Well, this bill says," we'll just say, "November the 12th," and even pay it till February the 15th. Why? I just need something written on there. "It wasn't actually fixed, was not released back to us until blah, blah, blah." That way.
We didn't do that.
Did not pay for.
Exactly.
Until completed.
And I have that issue in all departments, and we've asked numerous times, and I just can't get anybody to do it. And what happens is when June comes and the auditors come here, they don't call each department, they come and ask me, "You paid those, why didn't you pay this?"
And you're like. It happens with the fire department more than any other department, probably, because our trucks are older. They take them to get them fixed, just like the air leak. We took it to Marion, they worked on it, didn't come back, the guys got very good on the call, and they took it back, brought it back again, didn't fix it. Took it back, and they finally got it fixed, but it took three months, and they didn't send the bill out. But Brooke started thinking, we could, we could see if the people would do that, write that on.
Well, it doesn't even have these people.
It's just us.
We just need to.
Oh, you want us, the department?
Yeah.
So, like, the mower went down most of the summer, and it was over Massachusetts, and it came multiple times back, and went back and back and back and forth. You just need a note that said, "This was built to date, but they didn't fix the lawnmower or fix the mower until."
Same thing with, same thing if we decide to fix the mower ourselves, we know Bart can fix something. If Bart's gonna fix it, and he buys, you know, this part, and this part, and this part, and then he doesn't need this part, and he takes it back, when I get the receipt, I don't wanna pay for something that we've taken back, so you need to write on there a note, credit.
Well, I understand.
A net number.
I just need notes on there, because then when June comes and the auditors come, there are lots of questions I can't answer, because no one actually shared the information for me, and like Kathy said, this is where the buck stops. My office is where the auditor comes and says, "I need this, tell me why." And I can't say why Skinner did something, or Anderson did something, or Shane did something, because no one left me a note as to why it was done.
So, it comes down to the department heads, they need to do their job, they signed up for it, they need to do their job with the, to the bookkeeping paperwork, documentation part of their jobs, and you guys as commissioners need to help them, you know, hold them accountable to that.
Kathy, what's gonna be the protocol if Brooke, when Brooke leaves, which card, once you've got the, the number-one card in her hand? Who has the number-two card here? Lisa, the judge?
I would say it would live with Lindsay. That would, because she's my deputy.
Okay.
That's what I would say. When I'm not here, Lindsay's here. She covers.
And Lindsay's got to make the decision whether to surrender the card to someone or?
Well, at this point, I don't make decisions, or I don't want anybody to think that I'm making decisions. I ask Kathy things.
Okay. So, would it, would it contact you?
Kathy, it's who she would contact and find out. And I also would like a clearer definition of what is an emergency? What constitutes an emergency? Emergency spending is sometimes, can go awry, and I'd like to have a clear definition of what is emergency, constitutes an emergency. And there has also been bantering about, within the finance department, we have spending up to five hundred dollars without authorization. Of decreasing that to two hundred and fifty, because a person can actually go in, spend five hundred dollars, a few hours later, go spend another five hundred dollars, and there's a thousand dollars spent without any pre-authorization. And that.
It gives them no chance that the person should rip it up, a good idea, I mean, for us, of why they did that. I mean, you just can't help but spell for take your card.
But you didn't talk about the card, you just talked about.
I'm talking about.
No, I, I know.
Yeah, any purchase.
I said card, I didn't mean that.
Okay.
I meant.
Just general purchase.
In general, you know, I mean, we all know how to play the game, you know, you go out, you, you charge them for four hundred and ninety dollars, and you go charge them.
You go back around, you go in.
Yeah. And to me, that's fraudulent and bribery, but that's my thing.
So, you're talking about lowering.
And I don't know that I call it bribery, because I'm not, you know, they're not using it for personal or whatever, but it's just, it's.
It's like.
Taking it to that.
So, you're talking about reducing.
Reducing the.
The number to.
To two fifty.
Before you have to have a P O.
Before you have to have a purchase order. Now, I don't work in your department, so I don't know how that would, maybe a detriment to your department, so I need some feedback on that, but I'm just trying to tighten up the ship here, and have a little more accountability, because we owe that to the taxpayers.
I don't know about my department. I don't know what, what the cost of all that stuff is, you know, I don't know. And I think as far as the emergency, the department head should call me and say, "Hey,[1737.33] head, she'd call me and say, hey, I got this, this right here. He shouldn't have to come and get it on his own. He should check with me before he comes and gets it. This is an emergency. We got busted holes here. We got to get it replaced. We had a call, had a fire call. It's broke. Can I do that? Well, then, I would say, call you and say, hey, we've got a hole in it. We got to replace that hole. And that's the way that...
And anyway...
That's a good something we have here.
Yeah. Well, that's what I've always done with her. I've always called today, we got this. Can we do this? But that's what I think they should...
There's been some exceptions.
Sure.
And we, we just need to tighten it up. Because, you know, we, we're accountable to the taxpayers, and we need to, we need to do, do right by, all of us need to do right by fulfilling our responsibilities.
And we all have a budget we live by, you know, at all. That's worked. We did. I mean, it's...
I don't, I don't get so mad at me. My, I got my credit card bill the other day of $1,600. Was I in trouble? I'm feeling trouble.
Too happy.
Yeah, I know. He's in trouble, Andy.
She said that to me so, so far.
That's right.
She's not very happy with me.
Keep coming, please.
No, I'm just, because this is the bills right here. You can actually go to your category, and you can see what your month is. And you can, I mean, obviously, you can't see all the details. But I'm just looking down, and clicking if there's anything that was then over 250, that Skinner would have had to gotten, had me get a PO on.
Yeah.
And, I mean, most of the stuff that we have is billable stuff. So rarely do I think that there's anything over 250. You know, now, let's say they go, and they want to rebuild barricades, and they go up to Stoller, and they get over $250 in material to bill at Stoller. Will they still need a PO in order to go build that to Stoller?
If we establish that as being the minimum, yes.
Okay. And then they can go to Stoller and then approve that?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know how all other towns do this, but I do know that when we were looking at our new program for AP, we did this at Marion, which Marion is bigger than us. But Marion also requires a purchase order for every single purchase. If there's not a PO attached to it, they do not pay it. And that's how they catch them.
I think that's a good idea. I, I think that's good, sound business, you know. Because this is a corporation, and we, we are liable for what we spend.
That's what I'm accustomed to. There's a PO attached to everything. You have your little petty cash drawer, but other than that, everything has to have a PO.
When is the contract due for animal control?
I do not know that. I would, now, I saw that you brought that up, because I've been curious about some things too. So, yeah, we'll get our heads together on that.
Look into that. And mosquito control, I don't know if we should do this now, or probably not.
Can't talk about it today. Because all we continued the meeting for was the financial...
Okay, okay. That's one.
I'm done with what I need to, to say. Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Well, then I make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Mr. Gavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Thorpe?
Yes, yes, yes.
I hear that.
Yes.